Okay, Mayor, you can start.
Okay, welcome to the July 21st, 2020 joint meeting of the Board of Trustees, AHRB and Planning Board regarding the application for 41 Cedar Street. Although this is a joint meeting, technically, this is a continuation of the public hearing before the Board of Trustees that was last heard on July 14th, 2020. Is there a motion from the Board of Trustees to open the public hearing? Trustee Cassell, second trustee now, all in favor. Well, passes anonymously, so the Board of Trustees meeting, public hearing is now open. I'm now going to ask the Planning Board, Steve Hunter, to take a motion to open a meeting for the Planning Board.
I move that we open the, the meeting. Is there a second? All in favor?
I.
Anonymous.
Since Yair is not here, is, I don't know who steps into his shoes. Is that Dipty maybe, or who's gonna take over?
I can, if you wish.
I guess you have the most seniority, correct? I don't know, Dale?
I don't know. Okay, so what do I, what am I supposed to do?
Take a motion Dipty, from your, could you see what's happening?
Yes, I can. You want me to put my video on?
Yeah.
I put my video off, so sorry. Here we go. Hello.
Okay, so take a motion to open the AHRB meeting.
I take a motion to open the AHRB meeting. Today is July 21st. This is for the BOT. Oh.
For the AHRB joint meeting.
Second Paul Colombo.
Sorry, yes, thank you.
All in favor?
Hi, who else is there?
Dale, Paul, and Dipty.
Okay, so all the meetings are, all the, yeah, we have opened up all the meetings properly. Just a little house cleaning, the instructions on how to view the meeting have been posted on our website. I would just, for clarity, I will read it. Instruction for public hearing, if you are participating via Zoom, either by phone or video, you can raise your hand, and we will call on residents in the order in which they do so. In order to raise your hand, you should click on the icon labeled Participants, and a column appears on the right-hand side. At the bottom of that window is the Raise Your Hand button. For people calling in by phone, you can push star nine in order to raise your hand. We will let you know it is your turn by calling either your name or your phone number. So, and also the instructions on how to virtually attend on our website. You can watch it via YouTube or Zoom. So it's available for everyone to watch. Okay, so we are going to be receiving a presentation from the applicant. But in the meantime, before we start, Laurel Lee, maybe you can give us a little bit of your view on what the role of each of the boards are, and maybe Ed can fill in on some of the history.
Can I just, Mayor, can I just, I just wanted, just to frame this whole thing, and maybe I'm asking the same question you are. How does this meeting relate potentially to the overall approval process that we're now into?
Right, so Laurel Lee will address that.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for asking that. That's exactly what the mayor was asking for some clarification. The project design has changed somewhat since the boards prepared their recommendations to the Board of Trustees. The design elements that have been revised are going to be presented to you as, you know, to, in respect of your relationship as a recommended, recommending board to the Board of Trustees in the ultimate site plan application. They are coming down to the end of their public hearing process, and before reaching conclusions, we thought it was respectful of and in the best interest of your respective boards to receive the presentation on the project as it has been redesigned in accordance with the Board of Trustees' comments, suggestions, and decisions, especially because the project now includes no below-ground construction, and in light of the, the decision by the Board of Trustees that it meets the mandates of your code, has included a fourth floor that, that meets the criteria in that it provides for the opportunity, and the applicant will discuss this, for a third affordable housing unit in a different configuration than those that are readily available. So they have looked at this from all sides. They believe this is the preferred alternative in terms of the design. The site plan location and outline hasn't changed, except that the applicant has also moved a retaining wall to accommodate comments by a nearby property owner. So it is not starting from scratch. We've come to this, this point, and we thought it would be beneficial now to go wide with a presentation to those boards who had that approval, who had that recommendation authority under your code. So this is that opportunity for you to see how the board has, has made recommended changes and how the applicant has addressed them, and also to provide you with the virtual realities and the visuals that accompany that change to the design. So that's where we are. And Ed, if you had something to add in terms of the zoning compliance, if the Board of Trustees would be moving forward by closing hearing, they could proceed to a deliberation and a vote, and then detailed conditions could be attached to any approval if they're moving in that direction, and also we could complete the CEQA process by looking at a determination of significance. All of that is a way of saying that this was the best way to handle the reappearance of this project before the two boards that have the unique qualifications that, that are so respected by the village. So that's where we are.
Thank you.
Could I, one thing, though, I wouldn't say that it's the preferred necessarily.
Right, I was just gonna say that. Just to be clear, we have not actually voted or decided on whether or not the fourth floor is appropriate or just designed. So we're, that's what I think the purpose of today is. And Ed, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I think Laurel Lee covered it. It's what we're doing here is continuing the Board of Trustees' public hearing, and just, I think you invited the other boards so that they can make comments of the difference in massing and architectural appearance between the three-story and the four-story. That's changed then, and just to note that the applicant will be seeking a waiver of the maximum height of one foot 10 inches and a pilot for, for parking spaces. And that's about it.
I think the Board of Trustees was willing to hear the presentation regarding the fourth floor for a couple of reasons. One of them is the fact that an affordable, an extra affordable housing unit is going to be included, and also that the fourth story would allow the parking to be done on the level, street level, without having to do extensive digging, and we could hear more about that. But we may lessen the disruption to the downtown and lessen the disruption to the businesses as well, and the parking. So I think that is the reason, those are the reasons why we're willing to entertain this scheme. So, does anyone hear from the applicant, Jen?
Uh, yes, there are a couple of people here. I don't see Linda Whitehead, but I do see some people. I'm gonna promote them to panelists. Mr. Rabel from her firm will be starting this process. She had a, she had a commitment in Tarrytown and may be joining us later, but Stephen Rabel, an attorney with her firm, a land use associate, will be appearing on behalf of the applicant. And, and I believe the presentation team is here as well to give you visuals and the virtual reality that you had asked for.
Okay, I'm gonna promote them to panelists now.
Everybody should mute themselves if they're not having anything to say.
Suzanne, do we need everyone on the team? I could promote everyone, I just.
I think we need Christina right now and Stephen.
I just put Christina on.
Hi, Mom. And you see Stephen from Linda's firm?
I'm on.
I'm sorry, there's a lot of us, I'm getting confused. Okay. All right, I think I got everyone.
All right, great. Can everyone hear me okay? All right, I'm seeing nodding, great. So just for the record, again, my name's Stephen Rabel. I'm with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberger &amp; Stout. I am here tonight in lieu of Linda. She unfortunately had a conflict, but we are here for Cedar Commons LLC. And as was previously stated, the reason for this joint meeting is that since the project has returned to the Board of Trustees, as the applicants and the board have discussed it, the plans have undergone some changes. Most notably, as I think was mentioned previously, it's now proposing a partial fourth story. So this is the iteration that we're now calling Design B. So the partial fourth story has a number of benefits that we see. Very notably, as I think the mayor mentioned earlier, it's much less excavation because it allows for parking on the ground level, which obviously shortens construction time and impact. And it also allows for additional affordable housing. We're now proposing three units, as well as a greater diversity of housing types. So with that change, the applicant sought to mitigate some of the impacts because obviously additional story typically means additional height. But what you're gonna see as we go through the plans is that the overall height of the first three stories was actually lowered from the three stories that you saw in what we're calling Design A, the prior iteration. So in fact, because the fourth story is only partial, and because it's staggered, for a lot of these views, like this one that's up on the screen, where you're only seeing three stories, it's actually a shorter-looking building than what was previously proposed. You know, we've also had ongoing discussions with our neighbor Zion Episcopal Church, and out of those discussions, we've made some additional changes, including more plantings along the property line on our property, as well as proposing new plantings on Zion's property. The retaining wall has been pushed back to lessen impacts and help preserve some of the plantings that are on Zion's property. And we've also moved the utility lines to further reduce excavation and avoid impacts. Additionally, we've now enclosed that ground floor parking to the side and the rear so that the parking, even though it's no longer below ground, it's not going to be visible either from Zion property or from the South Presbyterian Church property. So the last thing I want to note is that we did also just receive the July 15th letter from Mazur Consulting, which acknowledges that our traffic consultant has now addressed all of their traffic comments and questions. So we think this is all positive changes to the project. We think this makes sense. And I'll turn it over now to Christina, who can walk you through the details of the plans and take you through the VR.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good. Okay, I'm Christina Griffin, Principal of CGA Studio Architects, and we've been through a long process and would like to take you through the changes that we've made in response to the comments by the Board of Trustees. This is still our cover page because the image is very similar. It's just the shape of the buildings has, has changed, and I'll go through that with you. Next slide. This is just, again, the, the location of the site, which is to the right of the theater building. Taking the place of that white house behind a storefront, one-story storefront. And next slide. We have developed two schemes for the, for the project. And Design A is a scheme that was reviewed by the Planning Board and the Architectural Historical Review Board, giving a favorable referral to the BOT. Design A was a three-story building with parking at the basement level. Design B is a four-story building, parking at the first floor level. And the fourth floor is set back 37.5 feet. And this is to make sure that you would not see that fourth story when you're walking down the street. And the advantage of the fourth story is so that we would eliminate all the excavation that is significant when we put parking down below at the basement level. So our new scheme, Design B, now has a parking on the first floor, requires less excavation, less construction time, less disruption of the downtown during construction. The two schemes have the same number of parking spaces. Actually, the Scheme A was 27, I'm sorry, Scheme B is 26. And that was because we had to reconfigure the parking to make sure it fit on the first floor. So we have 23 in the garage and three on the street. The height of the building has changed so that previously it was 40 feet to the top of the third floor, now it is 35 feet four. We reduced the top of the third floor, but we increased the top of the building to 46 feet 10, which is the top of the roof at the fourth floor. Previously, we had 15 residential units with 13 two-bedroom market rate units and two affordable housing units. Now we have 16 residential units. This is a response to, to a request to give a, more of a diversity of mix of units. So we added an affordable housing unit, and now we have three, two two-bedroom, one studio. The Design A all had larger retail space from 2009-83. We now have only 1,400 square feet. We reduced the retail in order to get the space in the back for the parking area on the first floor. The total square footage has changed from 27,473 to 28,847 square feet. And both schemes are compliant with the Vision Plan Design Guidelines and zoning building regulations, except for for Scheme B, which will need a discretionary approval for the fourth floor and a waiver for height and for one parking space because we, that one parking space is needed for the additional affordable housing unit. I'd like to take you through the plans next. Oh, sorry, we have another comparison chart just to give you a general idea of the benefits of this Design B. The impact and effect of this project will give an infusion of 1.3 million annual discretionary spending. It will have a significant increase of tax revenue, creation of 50-plus jobs, lower current street parking demand. And the benefits specifically of our new design, Design B, is as follows. Decreased construction time, less impact on the village downtown during construction, less excavation, and less potential rock removal. One additional affordable housing unit. Four feet eight decrease in height of the third-floor component of the building. All parking is concealed from view. Only three stories are visible at the rear of the property. There's less retaining wall, more developed green space between the building and the property line adjacent to Zion Church. And there's a slight increase in tax revenue compared to our previous scheme. Next slide. This is our zoning data, which just shows that we will need a waiver for the height and number of one parking space. Next slide Suzanne. In other respects, it meets the code, zoning code. This is our site plan and planting plan. Also, in response to a long, long discussions about how to handle the buffer area between Zion Church property and this building, we have changed our site plans to eliminate the retaining wall that we had on the west property line. We did this so that we could develop the green space here and have a more flowing space. We also added shrubbery onto, well, we are proposing to add plantings on Zion Church property, and then to add a few trees, and to protect, say, the 32-inch maple at all possible. We had an arborist report made, made lots of recommendations, and those recommendations have been reflected in this landscaping plan. We also are showing grade-level terraces and a roof terrace which covers the parking area, which is now fully concealed from view. Next slide. These are views of the existing conditions of the property between Zion Church driveway and the property line for this Cedar Commons project. We were asked to provide this just so that you can see what's here. Most of this is coming down, but we are going to replant and add trees and shrubbery. Next slide, please. This is just a few of the images of the trees that we're planning to, we're proposing to put on the property. We're gonna have a mix of native plant shrubbery in the narrow areas of this, of the green space between the driveway and the building. And we're going to, we're proposing adding two holly trees and a blue spruce on the Zion Church property. Of course, this plan is in front of them, and they're reviewing it, and we're going to see if they're going to accept that proposal. Next slide Suzanne. Our garage first-floor plan is now compared to the previous schemes that we showed the Planning Board and AHRB. It's changed slightly, only the retail space is 1,400 square feet instead of 1,900, and we have 23 parking spaces and a parking garage in the back. And this parking garage is now fully concealed from view. It's fully underground. We're using the wall of the parking lot, by the way, as a retaining wall. And previously, we had a retaining wall on the property line and created kind of a, an alleyway. And we filled this in so we could create this green space, greater, a more, an enhanced green space that would not have such a straight, such a narrow alley through it. Next slide Suzanne. This is the second-floor plan. I am showing this to you so that you can see that we have added an affordable housing studio unit, unit two. And we did this by reducing the size of the market rate units. And we, and unit one is a two-bedroom affordable housing unit. And on the third floor, next slide, we have a two-bedroom affordable housing unit, unit 13. So we have a total of three affordable housing units and 13 market rate. Next slide, please. This, these plans now show a fourth floor. We, we simply took the units that were originally on the first floor in our, in our first, in our Design A, and we moved them up to the fourth floor so we could use the first floor for parking. So these are those three, are three units up here. We've set back the fourth floor 37 feet 6 inches, and we're going to show you in our 3D views. The reason for that is to have this sense of a three-story building as you see, as seen from the street. This is our elevation. It's the same penetration and detailed window treatment that we had previously and reviewed, that was reviewed by the AHRB. The only, the main difference is we reduced the height. Now, the top of the third floor is four feet eight lower, and we are using 12 feet as our ceiling height inside the retail unit. And then up above, we see our, our fourth floor. The total height of the building is slightly higher than the maximum of 45 feet because of the face and clearance that we needed down in the parking area. Next slide, please. This is our west elevation. It's now showing that the grade is up against the wall of the building. So you'll see this piece of building here that's coming up above the grade is actually the parking, the garage, above the garage of terraces. And the rest of the garage is entirely buried in the low grade, concealed from view. Next slide, please. Our south elevation. If you see this, the dash line here, that is the grade at the South Presbyterian Church property. So that when you're up on that hill, you look down, and you will see two stories of the building, the third floor and the fourth floor. So seen from this view, you will see three, two stories above. And when you're down at the patio level in front of the units, it's three stories. Next slide. This is our east elevation. It's just showing the shape of the theater building in comparison with our proposed for three- and four-story building. We're, we're showing you the streetscape so you can see the difference between the previous design. Our proposed design is showing a fourth floor set back from the third floor. It's now, and the top of the third floor of the three-story building now much lower than the theater building, but the top of the fourth floor higher than the theater building. Next slide, please. And here are some 3D views. These are still shots from our virtual reality. This is just showing the view, the first one, as you walk down the sidewalk, and then as you approach the building from across the street, and then the lap on the bottom, you're directly across the street. We were asked to provide these so you could have something to review since these are all part of our virtual reality. Now, the view on the bottom is a simulation of the view from a pedestrian corner view. And you can see above you, the fourth floor is tucked back so that it wouldn't be visible from the street. Next slide Suzanne. This is the view at the top of the slide, looking towards the east of the entrance to the retail space. And you see the fourth floor up above, tucked back from the front facade and set back on the side as well. And then on the bottom is another view when you're on the Zion property, looking back at the building. Now, I think we can show you the virtual reality is, oh, we have a few more stills. I'm sorry, this is the view looking from the driveway, walking up the driveway, looking directly at the western side of the building. You can see the shape of our Scheme B. And then the bottom is the view from the top of the driveway, looking back at the building. Oh, a few more stills. This is a sidewalk view of the front of the building, looking at the entrance, corner entry detail, same, these are the same details we had in the previous scheme. And then this is the bottom view, it's a nighttime shot, showing the pocket park and the lighting here, and how the sidewalk wraps around the entry, creating a corner feature of, for the, for the, at the building. You know, this corner feature was very much a part of the idea that, because of the bend in the street, that there would be a nice feature to break up the rectangular shape of the building. So I think now we can show you the virtual reality, which has been revised to show our Scheme B. scheme B. And I think Sina is going to do that for us.
Yep, one sec.
Just give us a minute. He's setting it up. Okay. Now, Sina is going to take us down the sidewalk, walking towards the building. This is a simulation of somebody walking down the north side of Cedar Street, looking back at the building. Here, we're approaching it, and you can see the tower of the theater, you can see the fourth floor tucked in the back there. And this is our scheme B with the lowered third-floor facade, three-story facade, and now he's walking towards Zion Church property down the street, turning. Now, we, yeah. I want you to go back, Sina, could you go back across the street again? Just because this, this virtual reality has been a tool for us to see how you would view the building and how much of the fourth floor is visible. So I just wanted, want everyone to see that. You know, the distance to the setback to the fourth floor makes it so that when you, at certain views, and as you walk towards the building, it is, it becomes recessed. But now we're walking closer to the building, and you can see the fourth floor on the west side of the building. As you come closer, it starts to recede. And the difference, I'd like Sina, go back to that parking, he's going up the hill, and he's going to turn around and look back at the building. And this is going to, yeah, I wanted to point out how we've developed the property between the building and the driveway. Yeah, this whole area has now been filled in so that we have now the opportunity to have a nice plant bed. And as you go up the driveway, as soon as we have enough space, we've added a few trees. These are not the exact species. This is a simulation that we, that comes as, as close as we could make it to the plan that we have, our landscaping plan. So this shows a mix of shrubbery, like we put in there, one of the trees we're proposing, and then the large tree is the 32-inch maple that exists. And we're, by eliminating the retaining wall, we have more of a chance of saving that tree. There have been meetings with the Cosmo MacRione and Zion Church representatives to review and discuss this planting plan, and we have a proposal in front of them to, to ask them if they would allow us to develop this property so that once it's, you know, gets affected by, after it's affected by the construction, it can be replanted and made into a really nice green space. So that's our presentation. So I would like to, I think, give this back. I'd like to first ask you if you'd like to see any other views of the virtual reality, since we have it up here in front of you.
Do you have the three-story version available in virtual reality to walk, to just compare that?
Uh, I'm not sure. Sina, do you happen to have that?
Yep, no problem, just give me a minute.
Larry, are you talking to us?
I haven't said anything. You're asking me if I'm saying anything?
No, I see Larry, he was doing gestures.
Now, now, now I'm unmuted, I'm sorry, I was, I thought I-
It looked really good.
But related to Christie's question, is it possible to see an outline of the proposed three-story building against the proposed four-story building and to see an outline of the existing structures, just to get a sense of the relative mass and what it would look like if the building were five feet higher, even though it's only three stories in the, in the front? Because I think that might be useful, and also then to see that silhouette against, or to see a silhouette of the existing structures against it, to get a sense of, you know, how much the massing is changing.
Yes, of course, that's possible, but I don't think we have exactly what you're looking for tonight. We do have the streetscape. If you'd like, we can just start with the, let's start by answering the first question and show you the virtual reality for the previous scheme, and then maybe we can pull up the streetscape again.
I just wanted to jump in. Christina, I think you can show us just the front elevation of scheme A and scheme B, because the, you know, it's really, I think the question tonight, particularly for the planning board and AHRB who've looked at this a lot, is what's the difference between those two? And that may get to a lot of what Larry was, Larry's asking about, at least for tonight.
Do you think you can do that?
Presumably, if you took a screen capture of this view and compared it to the screen capture that you had of the other one, it would essentially, them side by side or toggle between them, it would essentially show it.
Yeah, I think we submitted those-
If I could jump, my recollection, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe in the package that we submitted-
Yeah.
-we provided you with just that, which is, design B was shown on sheets V1 through V4 as compared with design A, shown on sheets V5 through V7, and that's V as in Victor.
Would we have seen those at the planning board, or is this our, I don't remember if we were sent? Because at that point, it had left us, I think, right? So-
Correct. This would have been in the package submitted for this meeting on July 17th.
Right.
Okay, I didn't see it, but-
We can toggle between the-
We can pull it up.
Design, this is the, this is the first, design A, and we can toggle between that and the design B. Isn't that right?
Yeah, why don't we, I have the stills that we can toggle back and forth, but maybe, do you want to do the VR since it's up of design A, and then we'll do that? Is that helpful?
Up to you guys. It's easy for me to share whenever you want. I think it might be easier to toggle between the images rather than the VR, because it takes me a little bit to load it up.
I'll do that.
Suzanne, let's send it up.
So this is design B, and I'm going to, I'm afraid it's, it's a few sheets away, but I'm going to, I'm going to switch to, and this is design A. I'm trying to see how I can show you both of these at once. If you bear with me for a moment, I'm going to see how I can do that. I'm going to share again. Sorry, I'm going to share my whole screen here so I can try and show this to you. Okay, this is design A. And this is design B. Design A. Design B. So you should have received both these sets in your, in the submission packets on Friday. You can, you can put the printouts next to each other as well.
So it doesn't seem like there's much of a difference, except for we can see a lot more planting and a little bit of a fourth floor.
Yeah, let's look at this. So design B, I can point, try and point out the changes. The fourth floor is here, and here, the height is reduced in comparison to the tower here.
Right.
Let's look at, and you can see the height is a little bit, is higher now in comparison to this tower, and we've lost that fourth floor.
I actually like this, the second scheme.
You know, the, I'm going to go to the next views because I think the real, you know, a real benefit of this scheme is that the, especially around the back, that the grade comes up so much higher that, you know, you're, it's, it's, the building seems like a smaller building from the back. So let me show you, this is design B from the side. All right, here's design A from the side. And we have this retaining wall here separating, so we, to allow for a path around the back of the building in design A. But design B, we've eliminated that retaining wall, and now this piece of the garage that's popping up a little bit above the grade is, is, in essence, the retaining wall between the properties, allowing more of a green space.
I think what's interesting is that your scheme B is a lot softer to the streetscape, where in your, the first proposal, it's a little more harsh. It's like, it's very like, I don't know the word, like industrial, not industrial, but like, it's very regimented, where the second scheme is a little more softer to the community. So that's just my opinion.
This, this really is very nice, you know, a nice transition.
It's totally nice.
Is there a reason that we couldn't do, or it couldn't be like that for design A?
Design A, the reason we needed this path, partially for egress, we had units at the first floor level, and we needed two means of egress. So we have an egress exit from the back, and so we needed a path coming along the side of the building, which we don't need for scheme B because we have no, we've, we have the two, the two, we've reconfigured it, we've reconfigured the egress, so we didn't need that. Also, you know, this, we wouldn't be able to have units here with that, that similar grade because it would be below grade. It wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to have windows or light, you know? So it doesn't work when you have units at the first floor, but it works fine when you have parking because we don't need, you know, we have mechanical ventilation and mechanic, you know, lighting.
So the answer is no, we could not do this type of landscaping up against the building for scheme A.
And I'm just going to see, I think we have this to compare to, this is design B from up, up, a little bit further up on the Zion property, and this is design A. And, you know, a little, little bit harsher with that wall in the back, too. You know, with design B, there's a, there's a, the parking is below grade, so really it becomes like a roof terrace in the back, so off the second floor. Whereas with design A, it's, you know, you're looking down into the property to allow for that egress path, and you're seeing more retaining wall because the grade is lower And I'll go back, this is design B. We can show you the, those views maybe a little bit better in the, the virtual reality, looking, looking into the back there, a little bit from above, so you can get a sense of the difference. So I think those are the views we have to compare between the two schemes. Where should we go from here? Do you want to go back to the VR or?
I noticed in your plans on the, on the third floor, fourth floor level, unit 14 has a private deck area, and you've shown some sort of enclosure on it. That enclosure doesn't show up in the elevation or in the virtual rendering. Is there some intent or restriction that you might have on that that would keep an object from being built out?
No, I think, I think, you know, we showed the massing of, and the railing, we showed the railing around the decks, I believe, in the VR and the, and the renderings, but we didn't develop this, this plan in the VR.
I'm talking about the, the lower-left corner of the front roof deck, there's an object there that says "private terrace." And what, what is that enclosure going to be?
That detail, we did submit that detail to the ARB, it's an AZAC, and we have a, we have a metal railing around the perimeter here, and then this would be an AZAC, painted AZAC, you know, privacy fence, maybe, you know, I believe four feet, we have four feet, three feet, six, something like that. But we can show that on the VR, but we are showing this perimeter railing going all the way around.
I'm just wondering if that privacy fence at six feet would show up at all in the view?
I don't think it would be six feet because I just think it would be, it could be, you know, 40, this is a 42-inch high fence, so probably 42 inches, we have it. I don't think, I think because this is 40, we can, we're happy to show it on the VR, if you want to see that.
A small thing, but it strikes me in looking at these pictures, that one thing you see very prominently are the power lines going down the street. It would seem, it would seem like this is something that maybe we're going to have to do it in pieces, but while a project is, a new project's underway, it would seem to make a lot of sense, if it's feasible, to, to say, put the line underground from, maybe down by the Japanese, Japanese restaurant on through your property at least, so we'll get rid of two or three phone, two or three poles.
I mean, I, we can, we can definitely look into that. I don't know, it's been discussed with the design team.
I have just a question and a comment. Forty-six feet to 12, forty-six feet, 10 inches to the top of plan, scheme B, is to the flat roof of the fourth story, correct?
Yes.
So there's the railing, and then there's that, it's a stair tower or elevator tower or something on top of that?
Yes.
And what's, what's the total height of the building to that point?
In addition, 09 feet to the top of the bulkhead.
The other, my other comment is, thank you very much for that VR, it's incredibly useful, and we really appreciate the trouble you've taken, the time you've taken to do it, to show the building. It does, I notice it does, you're using a very wide lensing on that VR, and the buildings are actually much closer than they appear. Objects are most clear, are closer than they appear in the, in the lensing on your VR. Though, especially in the shots from Zion, the building is going to look a lot closer, you know, viewed from Zion, from Zion. That's just a comment. I don't know if you can adjust the lensing on the VR, but I have not- I don't know if you can adjust the lensing on the VR, but I am not asking you to do it, it's just, it's just an observation.
I have a couple of thoughts also. You know, first of all, I'd like to also thank you for the great presentation. This is super helpful. You know, basically, when we, when we look at the side views, this is where I see the big difference. When you come up the street or down the street, from either direction, you really see that four-story, and actually from the street, you can see the bulkhead with the design B, where it looks like design A, you can't see the bulkhead. And I feel like the massing is, feels much larger. And I understand we're benefiting the buffer areas, the planting, the ergonomics around the building, the parking. There are a lot of benefits to design B, but I feel there's a real negative in the massing because of that four-story from the side view.
When people talk, can you say your name and which board you're from? So, because it's hard to tell where the voices are coming from.
All right, Al Hale, planning board.
And I was, Steve Brosnahan, planning board.
Looks good.
And the comment about the power lines is Steve Hunter, planning board.
Oh, I have one other question. Christina?
Yeah?
The beautiful drawing you probably did by hand that showed all those nice facade details is quite different from what's shown in this virtual reality. Is there any kind of indication of where that's going to end up?
You know, we have.
Yeah, it is done by hand, yeah.
Submit these details to the ARB, which I could pull up if you want to see them, but it's all been detailed in the ARB.
Yeah, all the cornice and the brick details have all been, all the details have been developed, so we have, we've kept those same details. It's just, a lot of the fine detail is, it's not easy to do on the virtual reality. It's, I don't, I don't know, I don't think it's showing as much detail as some of the, of our drawings, of the architectural drawings.
So does that mean the answer's somewhere in the middle?
I, I know that when I drew that rendering, I was looking at, if you look hard at the 3D rendering, it shows a lot of the detail that Suzanne is showing you, these details. And that, that kind of, the focus on the virtual reality was to really give an idea of the massing view from the street. So I don't think the VR has the level of detail of the rendering and the 2D drawings.
Okay, thanks. I think that drawing is quite attractive, so that's why I asked.
I'm pretty sure I know what the answer's going to be to this, but I feel like I should ask it anyway. What are the chances of doing plan B without the fourth floor?
I, I don't think that, I think our, I don't think that is an option with our team, because it doesn't, to do a project like this, you need a certain balance to make sure it's feasible financially to do that, all that infrastructure with the parking areas and parking garage, elevator handicap accessibility, fire expressions, picket system, all the different upgrades has to be balanced with the number of units to make sure it is economically feasible. And I know, I, I think Cosmo Marchionne would probably, I'm not sure if he's here, but we would not, I mean, he's watching, but I don't think that is an option we would consider. There's a certain number of units that we felt had to make, we had to provide to make
Christina, Ed Manley.
Yeah?
The bulkhead. So if the board were to grant, you know, the fourth floor option, the height and everything is at the consideration of the board. And as you said last meeting, the bulkhead would fall into the requirements of 20% of the roof area under code, but since the whole, when we add a fourth story, the whole thing is at the discretion of the board. I look at your bulkhead plan and I see the staircase, the elevator, and then a fairly large room behind it. What's the intent of that and why make that side view of the bulkhead above the fourth story so large?
This building, the way it's been designed is so tight, it's been tightly designed, so there's hardly any mechanical space. And I, and we wanted to make sure that we had enough, you know, we haven't developed that yet, but that was the idea, and we decided, you know, this is at 15%, and you can go up to 20%, so it still meets the code for the size of the bulkhead. And it really is a place saver for potential mechanical equipment. Now, we know we can't simply have air condensers, which we do have on the plant, but there's going to be a lot more mechanical equipment in that.
So since the whole thing is at the discretion of the board, it, there's, the 20% doesn't even matter, it's moot, because it's not as a right. So again, I think if it's a place saver, it could be smaller.
We could, we could look into that, Ed, and see what we really need for the building.
Can other members of the board ask more specific questions to the other boards for information that we're looking to get?
Yeah, certainly you could ask any question you want. What do you ask?
I didn't mean for me. I mean, for, like, for people, for people on our board who are considering a fourth story, what kind of information do you want to get from the other two boards to help inform your decision on whether or not we're going to go with it? Like, is it about the massing? Is it about just in general their opinions? Do we need to go over why we would be allowed to have a fourth floor and how this meets those requirements, and if they think it's worthwhile? Like, what specifically are we trying to get out of all the people here?
Well, the planning board has already reviewed one design and opined about it, as has the HRB. So I think what we would like is their opinion, their comments on design B, which would help us in making a decision whether we prefer A or B or some version in between. So I think we're here to listen to the comments and opinions of the other boards.
The decision on the fourth floor is completely within the purview of the village board, so you're looking for comments and recommendations from your, your more technically-minded boards, and they're providing those to you when you're all seeing the same presentation at the same time. So we thought that this would save a tremendous amount of time and effort, and also if, if the other boards wanted to see massing specific to the presentations, go back to the VR, show this, and, you know, like what just happened, can we see the massing side by side? That's helpful to the question. But in terms of the decision under the criteria and the code, it isn't really relevant to the design, which is really what they're looking at, the design, and in terms of the HRB, the architectural elements. Those are the comments you're looking for from them.
I also want to give a little context. I think that some time ago, when I was on HRB, I met with the other HRB members, Steve Hunter, Rob Lane, I think we were all there with the applicant, and we walked through, we had discussed this a little bit, and we discussed various merits. And I think it's that question that's just come up again in this, and I think we'd just like to, you know, both of those boards looked at this project as scheme, you know, the three-story scheme. It was, both of the boards made a recommendation for that three-story scheme. And so now, in light of this other, you know, some benefits and some drawbacks to this alternative scheme, I think we'd just like to hear from the planning board and HRB what their opinion about this revised scheme is. And.
So this is Dale Greenwald from the plant, from the architectural review board. And Iair is having some difficulty with his microphone, so I'm going to add some of the comments that he's texted me. He believes, and I think I agree with his belief, that the massing works, that this is an improvement over the previous scheme in the lower edge of the front facade of the building. I think the green roof or the green space above the massing helps soften the appearance and the edge of the building, and makes it blend more with the adjacent plantings and the surrounding area. And those are my comments and Iair's, and I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything else.
Well, I agree with you, Dale, and Iair. And I believe that this design is actually more sensitive to our community, and I think it, I think it's a great design. And personally, like, I think that their presentation has been really good to, to what we're trying to envision, and trying to figure out like, what's good for our community. And I like it. I, I think, I think it's a great proposal. I know there's a lot of feedback. I read, I read a lot of comments and letters, and I know that a lot of people don't want change, but I think the way the presentation was done tonight, we can envision what this building will be and how it can accommodate our community. So that's my feedback. All right.
This is Rob Lane from the planning board. I would support the comments that Laura's made and that others have made. You know, it's no secret that I, I don't want to be in town when the existing building is knocked down, but I think that battle has been, that's sort of been litigated, and we're past that. And I think the additional, I'm personally not allergic to a fourth floor, and I think that the presentation, I do agree with Steve, that probably, I think we shouldn't all be surprised if the building looks much bigger in reality than the kind of fisheye of the virtual reality creates, but I still think that it nets out as a positive. The village, and it seems like a better, also, I think it does, it seems like a better scheme than the, than the previous scheme. And I'm assuming that the savings on, there isn't the additional affordable housing unit, which I think is a real thing, and I'm assuming that the disruption, excavate is a pretty big change in terms of what it's likely to do to the downtown.
Thank you, Rob. I love you.
You said that.
Me.
No.
I could have said that.
I had a couple of, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, from a site planning standpoint, this is, the B version is superior, clearly superior, way superior to the A version. So I think that's just site planning. So the focus really needs to be on the massing and bulk, as is brought up, that there is an impact, not from Cedar Street on the fourth floor, but when you're coming up from Cedar Street and passing Zion church, you do see a larger building, and it does have a visual impact. But I think that's outweighed by the fact that they've dealt with the appearance on Cedar Street as part of the street wall in that area, and by improving the whole site plan.
Can I just, I just want to take this opportunity to also just make one point about the process, because I do appreciate the courtesy that's been extended to us, but I do, to both boards, but I do think it is a little shy of what the process should be, in my opinion. And I would just like to say, until we resolve that issue, I would like to suggest that going forward, when we have a project like this, that we think is in a district where the Board of Trustees is, has jurisdiction, and is likely to have strong opinions, that joint meetings of this kind should take place earlier in the process, so that we can actually have the BOT's feelings about it incorporated into our resolution. You know, maybe someday we'll revise the whole process. I personally would like to see that, but until we do, I would like to suggest that we have, we be tuned into this idea, that when there's a project that's significant in one of the areas where the BOT is going to have the last say, there should be joint meetings held earlier in the process.
I would agree with that, Rob, and I think that is our intent going forward, because you're right. It's, we value your input and it would shorten the process, I think, overall. So, yeah, I would say going forward, that would be our intent.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hey, I tried to fix, I'm calling from the cell phone, so. So hi, everybody. Thank you, Christine, from the, for the presentation. I guess Dale represented my opinion. I even mentioned to Dale that the ground floor proportions of the scheme A seems better to the street than the scheme B, however, we have an issue of maximum heights, et cetera, et cetera. So we have to look that into, take that into consideration, but the incorporation of, of, let's say, the comments that we were discussing in our walkthroughs of avoiding rock excavation, better units with better views, avoiding all the retaining walls, the better working of the project with the site, I think everything is an improvement. So we are all, I am all in favor of the schedule, the proposal B. And I'm also in support of Rob's motion to have like, an earlier joint meetings for coordinated response early in the game. So thank you all for, for this.
Any other comments?
Yes, I had a couple of comments. Hello, Dipshah from the HRB. I think that moving the parking out of the basement was absolutely a vast improvement. I also would have no objection to the fourth floor, the way it is submitted. It is set back almost 37 feet from Cedar Street. It won't be visible, at least on Cedar Street, possibly from the church. Putting that green roof over on the front is a great improvement. I think overall, scheme B is definitely the way I would, I would go. Christina, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Dipshah, can you explain why you think that the, I wrote it down, but now I'm going to bring my hand ring, by the parking being moved is a vast improvement?
Sustainability-wise, you know, imagine having to excavate at 10 feet plus or minus. You could hit rock, it could have, construction could have gone on forever, pollution, all of that. Would, I think it's, you know, definitely a vast improvement.
Steve Hunter, I agree with my colleagues. I think the fourth floor is, is a reasonable way to solve the problem and make this a more easily digestible project. I must say, I had takeout from Pacola yesterday, so I, again, recognized the change that we're affecting in the village, but I think in the long term, this is a positive thing for the village, and so I support it. I also, meaning we can, we can do away with this kind of thing if we follow our colleagues in Irvington and Hastings and take the BOT out of the process. in Irvington and Hastings and take the B O T out of the process.
That's a whole nother issue, Steve.
No, I just thought I'd throw it in.
I, I want to add something, Mr. Mayor. You know, the, the situation here is that the B O T represents the people, and this is a major, major development for that sperry. So we have received, just as you all did, many letters and many emails. So the concerns of our residents, of course, have to be highlighted. And there is just so many moving targets and so many different opinions that we felt that it was extremely important, as things were changing, to of course, bring you guys, the experts into the picture. And I, I have to say that I like, I like very much the product of all of these conversations and everybody's input. So thank you to the developer for all of the efforts that they have done and everything that you guys have provided to us, because it definitely has helped us to have a clear view of what is actually being proposed. So thank you so much.
I have Steve Frazahan, if he has something to say, too.
I just had a quick question, sort of going back, sorry. If, if, if the bulkhead tops out at almost 56 feet, is that, what does that look like from the back? Is that, is the hill so high that you can't see any of that? Or is there, are any views from the church back there? Or, I mean, is that something that's, that needs to be considered? Or just, just a question.
And to piggyback on Steve's question, what about a view from the aqueduct? Does it, if you're looking from the aqueduct, would you see that? And how, is that visible at all?
I think I requested a view of that in the last meeting.
I can share the views from the aqueduct. I have those photos for you. And in terms of the view from the back, I'm not sure if, I don't have stills from that, but, so you know, I'm not sure how far up you can get on the Zion property, so that maybe.
We could try to go.
Show us the elevation. I think you had a rear elevation in the last.
Well, we could look at the rear elevation, sure.
Just curious.
Yeah. The view from South Presbyterian.
Yeah, Presbyterian. You can't see it from the aqueduct. When you're walking on that, you only see Zion.
No, because there's a parking, you go through the parking lot there.
Yeah.
You know, I actually, I was, I was there today and I took some pictures. If you want to look at the aqueduct, the question first, you know, this is, this is, you know, approaching the steps, approaching the steps, we see Zion a little bit. Zion, the project is over here, you know, maybe in a winter view, you might see a little bit of that wall, but really, the view of the project, this is the existing white building.
Really don't.
I'm sorry?
You really don't see anything.
Yeah, it really, it's, once you get to the top of the steps from the trail, it comes into view. And then, of course, as you cross the street, but then, once you're in this parking lot adjacent to Sushi Mike's, you can't really see anything. Or, or from the municipal, this is a view from the municipal parking lot. So, you know, it's really, and then, of course, the aqueduct continues past the municipal building, so there's no views from there. So I just, I just want to take you through that. And I'll go back to the rear elevation.
At the top of the stairs of the aqueduct, though, when you can't see anything and there's greenery in the way, isn't that greenery going away as part of what's going away between Zion and the building?
You mean going away seasonally?
No, going away, taking out the trees, so.
Well, this is, this is down on the aqueduct, so this is Cedar Street.
Top of the stairs.
The top of the stairs, let's see.
But even, even from the direction of where the municipal parking is behind Village Hall, you really will not be able to see anything because of the trees that they are currently there right now because of the season.
Well, also because of the hill from, you, you can't see past that hill, you just see Zion when you're in the parking lot.
Yeah.
I'm going to take your word for it.
This, this is, you know, well, I'll take you through, you know, I, I walked around it today, so I, you know, I know it pretty well. And I, of course, I don't have the winter views, but this is going, you know, the, the building, the municipal building is here, and this is approaching that second parking lot. These trees were, are not, this is on, I don't know if it's the village property or Zion property, I'm, I'm not sure, but it's the other side of the church. This is going through, so we're headed towards Cedar. And this is the end of the parking lot. So once you're on the sidewalk and you look up, this is the, this is, the project is over here, and this is Zion. And then, but you don't see it until you're on the sidewalk. And then, of course, you cross the street and you see it, but as you drop down onto the trail, you don't see it.
From the area around South Presbyterian, is that, I mean, I don't, you know, I just don't know how high that hill is back there, is, is it?
Even, even from Elm Street, from the back of Elm Street, if any view of the building coming after all, it is going to be four stories.
I can pull up.
You know, I don't think it's bad to see the building, it's just, I just don't want to know.
Yeah.
What it's going to, for their view there.
I have photos from the South Church parking lot I can share with you. I took those today, too.
Yeah.
They've been laid out, and I'm happy to share them. I'm just gonna, this is the rear elevation, so this is the, the top of the retaining wall at the South Church property.
When you see the, the hill going up there behind it, yeah.
It's, it goes up from this point. And if you give me a moment, I can pull up those photos I took from the South Church parking lot today. You couldn't see, I couldn't see the existing white building from the South Church parking lot. It's just, it's really covered with trees, but I'm happy to share those with you. We can, you know, do further study, if you liked, as well.
Yeah, I'm just curious to see what they're going to be looking down upon.
It might take me a moment to pull them off of my phone. So if you want to, could talk about something else for a moment, I'll pull them up. I'm going to mute myself for a minute and find them, okay?
Steve, I think when we looked at the, at the last meeting, we looked at the grade elevations of the parking lot of the church relative to that retaining wall height and then the roof height and bulkhead height. And I think that, if I remember correctly, the, the parking lot, the grade elevation was a couple of feet higher than the level of the, at the property lines, where that retaining wall is at the back. So you do get a, from the parking lot, you do get, you get a view of the back of the building. And I think the, you know, the goal is to make it a good-looking building to look at. Because you're going to see it as a three-story or, you know, four-story building in either, either scheme, it's, it's visible from that parking lot. Okay.
Just some housekeeping. I want to acknowledge the, a letter dated July 21st, 2020, from the attorneys representing Zion Church, Bladsherding Wilson. They will be included as part of the record. I also want to include, acknowledge receipt of letters from, an email dated July 15th, 2020, from Sarah Colombo, letter received July 20th, from Leslie Walter, email dated July 21st, 2020, from Mavis Kane, email dated July 21st, 2020, from Mark Blanchard, and an email dated July 21st, 2020, from Barbara Dannenbrink. Those will be made part of the record. And while we're waiting, are there any other comments from any board members?
I have a question about the affordable housing, Christina. So I, I'm looking at the code and it requires us to have, you know, minimum gross floor area per affordable unit shall not be less than 80% of the average floor area of the non-affordable. So does that hold true for the studio that you're proposing? Or would that be another exception that the board would have to make? And is there any way for that studio to be a one-bedroom?
I don't think it can. It can't be a one-bedroom. But the first question was, is it 80%? I believe it is, but we have a range of, of floor areas of the unit. So I'm not sure if the 80% is the average, but I can let you know.
Okay, I think that would be helpful, yeah. It says 80% of the average floor area of non-restricted housing units in the development.
Because the two-bedroom unit is two-bedroom, two-bath, so it's supposed, it's similar in layout to the market rate, but smaller.
But it does, minimum requirements for a studio under the Affordable Housing Code, does it, how many square feet is the, is the studio?
489 square feet.
And does that meet the minimum requirement?
Does, it's 450 is the minimum. But it also says, just, just so, you know, the record's clear and the board's aware of what we're doing, I mean, it says, and Laura Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, but it says that affordable housing units shall be distributed among one, two, and three-bedroom units in the same proportion unless a different proportion is approved by the Board of Trustees and Planning Board as being better suited to meeting the housing needs of the village. So to approve the studio, both the Board of Trustees and the Planning Board would have to say okay? Is that how I'm understanding it, Laura Lee?
That is correct.
Even though the studio is an addition, not the required, the requirement is the two-bed.
Right, it's, it's, it still can't be subpar. It has to meet the 80%, and I believe that would be 80% of similar apartments. So if you had other studios, it couldn't be less than 80% of the average size of other studios. But you're adding this as your additional unit. So there, you know, there's a way to look at it from both sides because it's the additional unit, and it does meet the minimum standards in your code for an affordable studio unit. So you might pull the planning board to be sure that they're in agreement that, that this, this addition of a studio instead of a one, two, or three-bedroom would, would serve the purposes of the, of the Affordable Housing Code.
My, my one concern, Laura Lee, you, you can help out with this. I mean, I'm grateful that they gave us the additional unit, but I don't want this to be a precedent that a studio apartment will automatically allow us to approve a fourth story. If this fourth story is approved, it's not just because of the studio apartment, there are other reasons as well. But I don't want studio apartments to become the standard for additional affordable housing units.
Sure. If, if, if the board is inclined to approve this scheme B with the fourth story, you could make clear, and, and of course, it's a case-by-case basis, but in this case, the additional variety of having a studio in your downtown affordable seemed to be the topic of the discussion, and that lent itself to moving forward with this design to, to bring it back to the, your planning board. That, that seemed to have been the direction, and it certainly doesn't set a precedent because it's certainly fact-based for each and every development that comes to you.
But it could be considered the fact, it could be considered a precedent, because it is a studio apartment that is the only thing that is more added to this project that is affordable, adding to the diversity. I, I still, I mean, I'll bang on a dead horse, I need more to make this project adding to the diversity of the downtown per our code to allow the fourth floor. And right now, it's a studio apartment, correct?
I don't, I don't think that's a fair assessment.
It's two one-bedrooms and a studio, so.
Two, two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms are part of the original project that they have to have anyway.
Right. Because it is adding to diversity, that is one element that you're considering when you're considering whether it's appropriate to add the fourth floor. It's only one of the facts.
I'm sorry, I thought it was also the, the, the impact, the environmental impact, as Dipshah was saying, and the logistical and time and disturbance of everything else.
Those aren't reasons that we're allowed to permit it. That's not part of the code that is what we're discussing. So the only way we can allow the fourth story is for that specific reason in the code, which does not outline environmental impact and diversity in the downtown.
Can we have clarification on that, Ed? Is it really the case that it is so narrowly written? That it is, that it is literally only affordability?
It is written like that.
Diversity.
Laura Lee, can you read the code out loud, please? It says residential diversity, and it's not just about affordability.
Right. I'll have to get to it, I'm a little hampered by tech tonight, so if you just allow me to turn off my video and.
I have it here, I could read it. It says, "It may be increased to four stories and 45 feet in the D B and D G zones, and four stories and 40 feet in the D T zone at the discretion of the Board of Trustees to accomplish the goal and objectives of enhancing residential diversity and affordability in the downtown." So it's residential diversity and affordability in the downtown.
And, and then there's also text, this, I, I sent, I, I, just a minute ago, I, I stopped the video because Christie had asked me in an email to send her. There's also a text provision beyond the notes in, in your, in your A8, in your eight. Beyond those notes, there's some provision in the text, and again, you'll have to forgive me, I'll, I'll find it again. I'm just hampered by tech being able to get simultaneously to.
I could help if you want.
Well, I, I'll just say, I mean, for what it's worth, I mean, you're right, code's the code. I, I think that, I, I think it's unfortunate, and I know the planning board, I don't believe, was as engaged as we might have been in this. I think that the idea, if you're going to have a discretionary fourth floor, I think you would want the ability to account for a variety of things. Some years ago, there was a proposal for Main Street in which, maybe Christina was involved in this, actually, right? Wasn't there a proposal? And one, and one of the provisions for a fourth floor was the possibility of creating an elevator connection from the Embassy Club up to Main Street. Is that right, Christina? Christina, you're muted.
Oh, sorry.
So I think that there, I guess my point is that there are other community benefits. To me, it's unfortunate if that's the way it's written, because to me, if you're going to allow yourself a discretionary action, you want to be able to look holistically at a bundle of benefits or things that are not benefits.
And, and if you, if you look in 300-36, it talks about the upper story setbacks, and it talks, this is the text I was discussing. In addition to B8, the diagram table, which has those notes specific to the affordability and the diversity of housing, you have this section which says, "In granting approval for a fourth story and an increase in height above 40 or 35 feet, as the case may be, in determining the appropriateness and increase in height, the Board of Trustees shall take into consideration the recommendations of the Planning Board and the H R B in considering impacts, including but not limited to view sheds, solar access to the streetscape and surrounding buildings, use and enjoyment of the Old Croton Aqueduct, and consistency with the character of the individual building and surrounding buildings. Based on a review of the potential impacts cited above, a fourth story and/or increase in height, if approved, may be required to receive from the front facade," as you have here, talking about the, you know, the technical aspect architecturally. You do have additional criteria in the text, as I've just read it, on the provision, the subdivision one, upper story setbacks in Section 300-36 Downtown Districts. So you do have both the notes, talk about affordability and variety of housing options, plus this totality of the benefits as recommended by the Planning Board and the H R B when considering the impacts.
Any other comments? Jan, does anybody from the public who wants to comment?
Before we go there, just to out hail from the planning board, the, the last sentence of that paragraph that Laura Lee just read says, "In addition, in the downtown districts, the livable floor area of the fourth story, if permitted, shall not compromise more than 50% of the total floor area of the story below." Now, is that something we've looked at?
I think they did. Right, Christina Griffin?
All right, so Ken, do we have those numbers? Do you know?
All right. So Jen, do we have those numbers? Do you know?
I'm just pulling this up. The four, the, the area of the fourth floor versus the third floor? I'm sorry. I missed that. I was, I was pulling something up. What, what are we looking, where, what is?
The area. What is the percentage of the?
I think the fourth story can't be more than fifty percent more than the square footage of the third story.
Yes.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to get that to you. I don't, I don't have that at the moment. I didn't know about that. I can. Let me look that up.
Our code is fun to work with, right, guys?
We're dumping a lot of stuff on Suzanne.
Well.
I still have pictures from South Church if anybody wants to see those. If you want to just finish that thought and then I can look up that calculation. I don't know if that's, you want to do that?
Great.
All right. I just want to. So this is the, the South Church parking lot. This is Zion here. The project is somewhere over here.
Yeah.
That's Zion. The, I can't, you can't see the existing White House from here.
Yes.
This is looking over this, I just peeked over this fence just to see what was going on in here. I, you know, I couldn't really see anything. I know these pictures aren't great, but that's, I just, I was just seeing if you could see, you know, down to where the project is and I couldn't. You can see there's quite a lot of greenery in this parking lot here. That's all I have, but I can also.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I'm, I'm happy to. I just, I think maybe I'll share the survey for a moment too, just to show you the relationship and then we can move on. This is the relationship between the properties. So this is where we were looking. We were in this. All right. This is the church and we were in. Those photos were taken in this parking lot here, right? Yeah, here, right here. We were looking here. The Zion is over here. Sorry. It's not clear, but.
No, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah. So Zion's over here. We were looking at Zion from here. I'm gonna just mute myself and look up those calculations and I'll let you know the difference between the fourth and third floor.
Okay. Jen, does anybody who wants to speak?
Yes, we have three people with their hands up.
Before you do anything, before you start, let me just say, it's my intention to end this meeting at nine o'clock because that's twenty-three minutes. And for those who want to speak, I'm holding to a hard three-minute rule. So anything after three minutes, Jen, you will mute. Okay, so we just, you know, we can have another public hearing if we feel, majority feels that way, but to keep this to a nine o'clock ending, three minutes, and then that's it. So go ahead, Jen.
Okay. The first one I'm gonna put on is Cynthia Karakta. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? I'm unmuted.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'll make this very brief. I am Cynthia Karakta. I'm speaking on behalf of the Vestry of Zion Episcopal Church, right next door to forty-one Cedar on Cedar, Cedar Street. For introduction, I'm a Vestry member and the clerk for Zion, as well as a Dobbs Ferry resident. The Vestry's had multiple opportunities to meet with the BOT specifically at the public hearings regarding the site plan and the evolution. However, this is really a unique opportunity. We want to take advantage of it to address all the boards and present them with a summary of what was contained in the letter that was received today, July twenty-first, 2020. We would also like to ensure that all of the independent board members receive and appeal to you to read the details of those letter. So in brief, we have three major points to bring up to your attention for the public record. With regard to the installation of the buffer and adequate screening, we refer you to the Village Code thirty dash, three hundred dash forty-nine that states that your boards have the screening, that the screening or buffering may be required by the boards to provide reasonable and necessary transitions or separations between uses. Zion remains very deeply concerned, especially after seeing the virtual V-two and V-three presentations by the applicants that in relation to the buffer and submitted as part of this current application, it is inadequate to preserve the Zion sanctuary character in its current planning. Number two, in keeping with the code, we would hope the board adopts a site plan and takes all necessary steps to preserve the protection of existing landscape and in particular, the historic maple that is located in that buffer zone. We are asking for also the site plan to be in keeping with best practices during the building to preserve and protect with the advice of certified arborists and requesting as condition of site approval, a financial guarantee from the applicant to protect and preserve. Thirdly, we have a concern with the size and bulk of the building and that has been discussed amongst yourselves and amongst the boards. We have a concern not just for the impact on the use of Zion property and its use and the closure of the Zion property, but to the general community as well who frequents the Zion grounds. The property has been used by Dobbs Ferry communities since eighteen thirty-three, when it was first built, and the character that it does provide and the respite that it provides the community is very important. The views from Zion grounds, towards Zion grounds, the bell, the halls, the history behind it, and not to mention frazzled groups of parents who flock during the Halloween parade for the respite in the close of, and free coffee during the Halloween trick or treat breaks. So we again would like you to consider this and the impact on, of the massing. And looking at V-two and V-three, it is true, the comments from the boards, members of the boards, that this is not virtual reality for us. This is reality. We will see the building regardless of the massing with the potential, with the current proposal for.
Thank you, Cynthia. That's three minutes and thirty seconds.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Who's next?
Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Yes. Can you state your name for the record?
I'm Michael Sabatino. I'm the former senior warden of Zion. I live at ten Belmont Place in Yonkers. Just to add on to what Cynthia said, I'm focusing mostly on the sanctuary space. In that letter that you received today, we are almost at the completion of being declared a national historic place on the National Historic Register. We also have a garden dedicated to Michael Lepore, who was a parishioner who was killed in nine eleven. A lot of the residents gather there during the week. They eat their lunch. It is a place of repose. I urge the Board of Trustees to include the buffer zone in the site plan. We do not feel that the screening that's being suggested by the developer is sufficient. All they want to do is plant low bushes and low trees. That's not what we would like to see. This is going to really change the view from Zion Church and from the public walking up on Main Street. And we want that buffer, whether you decide on A or B, and that is in the code three hundred point four six. The. Just wanted to see what else. I guess that pretty much sums it up. It's really, the density of the screening has to be increased and the buffer must be part of the site plan and we must preserve our tree. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else?
Yes, I'm gonna put on Mary. Mary, can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I would just like to add on to what Michael and Cynthia said. I am Mary Ford Sussman, the senior warden of Zion Church and a resident of Dobbs Ferry. Michael mentioned that Zion is currently awaiting an expected approval of its pending application for the inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places. This application is well along in the process and has been very well received by reviewing agencies. To quote here, something from the application. "The Zion Episcopal Church complex is eligible for inclusion on the National Register of Historic Places under criterion C as a rare example of an early Gothic revival church in Westchester County and as an unusually intact early church complex dating almost entirely to before the twentieth century. The period of significance encompasses the full development of the church complex over time, beginning the start of construction of Zion Episcopal Church in eighteen thirty-three to the construction of the North X, the last major addition in nineteen sixty-three. Zion Episcopal Church is the oldest surviving Gothic revival church in Westchester County and the oldest religious building in Dobbs Ferry. So clearly, the historical significance of Zion is indisputable." I would just like to add that this really does show the importance of the church close as a sanctuary space, both in its reflective, reflective way of being a place of reflection and also in its historical character. And that, ask that the board really consider the importance of retaining that buffer and that screening so that, that we can retain that quality for our church. Thank you very much to all the boards for listening to us tonight.
Thank you. Okay. What I think the next step would be to, just to poll the Board of Trustees to see how they feel. Donnie, you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I, I have a question about the screening. Zion is saying that the screening is too, is too low, that there's shrubs or low trees. Is there a reason as to why the screening can't be higher trees or higher shrubs?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up the planting plan just for a moment, just so we can look at it. The, from the arborist report, there's a limit to where, because of the distant, the, the amount of greenery, there's a limit of where we can start planting the taller trees. They were also concerned about visibility coming down the Zion driveway. So not planting taller things as you come down the driveway so that you would have visibility. I'm just gonna pull up the planting plan. That would be helpful.
So that who would have visibility? People driving down from Zion?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm just gonna.
Your mayor, just so you know, there were, there were two other people with their hand raised.
Too many things open here. Okay, here we go. Just in talking with Save a Tree, this, you can, this is the green space here. This is the property line and this, there's a very narrow strip of green space before the Zion driveway. And really, what they recommend is ten feet of green space before the planting of taller trees. So that's why we've located, you know, a proposed blue spruce. I think it grows to fifteen or twenty feet right around here and, and the holly's back here. So the, the green space distance was an issue and also the visibility as you're coming down the driveway. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
And I also have the calculation on the fourth floor, if you want that as well.
That I definitely want, yes.
Okay. So the fourth floor, as it is now, is sixty point eight percent of the floor area below. The fourth floor is six thousand two hundred and sixty and the third floor is ten thousand two eighty-nine. So if we, if the fourth floor was to be fifty percent of the floor below, we'd have to cut a thousand one hundred and fifteen square feet. And that would make it fifty percent of the floor below.
And Laura Lee, you're saying, and Ed, maybe you could chime in, that's what the code requires.
In that text, yes.
Yes, in, in the provision of the text, not the table, that it's, it indicates that it should be no more than fifty percent.
We'd be, we've, we can, we, we can probably make that happen, you know?
I think we could.
And keep the three units, just reduce the size of them. But I think we can, we can make that happen, reduce the fourth floor so it does meet.
That would presumably reduce the massing. And, and if I could go back to the, to the, the buffer and the, the arborist, it would seem to be very helpful if the developer and, and Zion could work together and find something that's mutually agreeable because I, I really feel like that would help this process.
Could I suggest, Larry, we often write resolutions with caveats that the applicant have, have a landscaping plan that is acceptable by a village consultant. And we have a very good one in Suzanne Nolan that we've used in the past. And so we could have Suzanne come in before, you know, this project is closed out and, and the planting is done and arbitrate that agreement between the two, two residents with the proper screening and landscaping.
I suppose we, we could go there, but it would seem to me that we, each time, it seems like we're getting a little closer. And, and if the developer could try again to work with Zion to find something that would be acceptable.
Like I say, it could be part of the resolution that before it's, the project is complete, that the landscape be acceptable to the consulting architectural, a landscape architect.
Yeah, it can be made a condition of approval if the board wants to move in, in the direction of calling for resolution for review, including a determination significance under secret. If you, if you want to move in that direction, once you close the public hearing, you can call for draft resolution. And that is a very common example of a condition to make it in the opinion of a professional. And in this case, the village's consultants would qualify as that professional. So they could provide that level of expertise to the satisfaction of Ed and his, you know, his troops in the building department.
Is there any chance that could happen before our next meeting or not?
What I'm suggesting is, is if you make it a condition of an approval resolution and with, then, then what you're saying is you approve the site plan with these conditions, one of which being this landscaping plan has to be acceptable to your professional, that would be monitored during the building permit application and construction phase. So you don't need to see it.
Intermediary.
Yes, you have a professional intermediary assisting.
The whole discussion could go on during construction, you know, for a year between our consultant landscape architect and, and Zion Church.
Yeah, based on field conditions, based upon, you know, what storms might come through and take other trees down. You really don't want to set it in stone ahead of time. You really want, if you're moving forward with an approval, really want to have those decisions made in the field to the satisfaction of a licensed professional, in this case, Ms. Nolan. So it's just a suggestion.
But we're going to have to see the plans that would reflect the reduction in the fourth floor, correct, to the fifty percent? So I don't know.
Again, if you made that a condition, those would be detailed plans. But if you want to see how it affects the massing, the visual and the virtual reality massing, then yes, you can hold this open to get that additional information. But it is, again, an appropriate condition that it needs to meet that code to the satisfaction of, in this case, the professional being your, you know, your, your building inspector and those details, that level of detail would go on construction plans, a complete set of which would have to be prepared and proposed. a complete set of which would have to be prepared and proposed.
And also, the opinion of the boards, the massing was already acceptable. So if we say by code, the applicant has to come back for the draft resolution at the next meeting of the Board of Trustees with the plans that have the 50% fourth floor, you know, there's no reason to keep the public hearing open.
Okay, so let's take a poll of the Board of Trustees to see where, if we've reached some type of consensus and where we're going with this. So Donna, I'm gonna start with you, so...
Thanks. I don't know if I'm really prepared to give an actual statement tonight about it. I'd like to think a little more about it. I'm leaning towards it, but I'm not gonna say for sure.
Okay.
I haven't made a final decision, but I think I'm comfortable with the plan being subject to a number of conditions. So that's where I am. Although I also would prefer to have the public hearing stay open so that if there are comments on the new design, that the public has the ability to have something to say.
Muted.
I got it, I got it, sorry. I agree with Larry and Donna. This is very helpful and it was very informative, and I'm really glad we did it. I agree with the comments that this is something that should happen much earlier in the process, where it's a project that involves us having final decision, and the Code Committee has talked about that a few different times, and hopefully this will be the final time that it's done this way and we'll move forward in a better way. But yeah, this has been helpful, but I still don't know where I am completely on it yet. I want to process and think and...
Okay, Kristi?
I'm still where I was before. I wouldn't move forward with the fourth floor. I understand everyone thinking that it's a project that's design-wise okay, but I think conceptually, the idea of adding a fourth floor should be reserved for something that is extremely adding to the diversity. And like if this was a four-story building full of affordable units, yes, I understand waiving the need of a three-story max, but this is one studio apartment and some environmental impact. But I think that setting the stage for having four-story buildings all down Cedar is not worth it in this case, and it's a very thin line between this being... I don't know where I'm going with that. That's it. That's the end of it.
I am torn between some of Kristi's statements and the rest of the board. I think that all the information that has been shared here is very valuable, and it will generate some concerns or some approvals from our residents. So I do want to make sure that the public hearing remains open, and I do have to digest a lot of the information that was shared here. I thank all the board members and the developer for all the information, but I'm not in a position to actually go towards one way or another.
Okay, Mike?
I'm in favor of the option with the fourth story. I think ultimately, it is a better-looking, more sustainable, and overall, sort of better building than the previous proposal. So I would be in favor of it.
Okay. I like to think about it myself more, although I am leaning towards the fourth floor. I think the benefits are worth adding the fourth floor. But since the most of the Board of Trustees would like to think about it, I will then continue the public hearing until our next Board of Trustee meeting, which I think is August 11th at 6:30. So if there's nothing further, I would take... Yes, Alan?
Yes, sorry. Just one other bit of food for thought for you guys who have to vote on this. Steve brought up the rearview issue, and Suzanne was nice and took those photos. But when I looked at those plans, it just crashed up. I showed the street at 172 feet above sea level, the parking lot at 198 above sea level, and the building height at 46 feet plus another nine feet in the bulkhead. If I'm right, that building is gonna be 29 feet above the parking lot of the church above it. So I just want you to think about that and how that's gonna affect all those properties on Broadway. Thank you.
Are you saying that it's gonna be 29 feet higher than the parking lot at Zion? Like up the driveway parking lot?
More than that. I think that's lower than the parking lot of South Church.
You know, I think...
When you say the church, are you talking about the South Church parking lot?
Correct. That may correct me, maybe I didn't read the plan.
I think, you know, I think so because we have the grade point at the wall at South Church, but then the grade goes up, and I could pull up the survey again, or share the survey with you separately.
Sure, those were the top of lines through the middle of the parking lot.
Are you looking... Yeah?
That's what I read.
I was just looking at this. We can take a look at that. This, I see at 190, are you using 198?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what is it down on Cedar, where the, you know, at the front?
172.
Right, so I got those numbers correct. So am I wrong about those heights?
I'll have to... I wasn't sure where you were getting them from, but I just knew we had them on the survey. But we can look at that from that point, from the parking lot.
Just a heads up.
I also asked a question, Ed, because the code allows us to have the height at 45 feet. This is proposed at 46 and 10 inches, I think. And I'm assuming, based on our conversation, and the bulkhead increasing it by nine feet, the bulkhead's excluded from those height calculations?
Yes, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, they knew you need to give a waiver of one foot 10 inches. The bulkhead is excluded by our code.
Okay, and Christina, is there any way to have the scheme B without the extra foot and 10 inches? You can think about it, let us know. I just think it's, you know, if we're allowing a fourth story and we think that's viable under the reasons in the code, also making an exception for the height in addition to that, you know, plus the parking, like there's a lot of now variables going into it. So I just want to make sure we understand if that's possible, take it into account.
We can take a closer look at that.
I have a question about the bulkhead. That will be architecturally pretty. I mean, it's not just gonna be sticking up there, you will have it blend into the building, am I correct?
Windows will... You know, usually we want it to be very quiet bulkhead, though it's not... Well, it's gotta blend in in color and detail, but it probably won't have as much detail as the front facade.
Yeah, I just...
You couldn't do a miniature Greek temple or anything?
Oh, I like that.
Architecturally pretty, is that, Donna, is that in a...
Architecturally pretty, thank you.
I want to make sure that next time we meet, the last time, hopefully, we talk a little bit more about the curb cut and the safety implications of that, and really digest the Mazer Engineering Report as the BOT, because we've spent a lot of time talking about the mass and the appearance of the fourth floor, but not as much about the possible safety implications and kind of gone through that. So all of us should really read up and make sure we have any thoughts on that, on the resolution.
That's a good point.
Mayor?
There are two, are there anybody, or are there two more people?
Yes, there's two other people.
Remember, my goal was to end at nine. It's after nine. We do have three-minute hard and fast rules, so if you have something to add, we're happy to hear it, but if it's a rehashing, please keep it very short.
Yeah, I'm gonna put Leslie on. Leslie, can you hear us?
Good evening. I'm Leslie Walter, 40 Clinton Avenue. I've read all the traffic consultant correspondence since May of 2019 up until June 24th from the Village Traffic Consultant Mazer about this proposed, what I think of as a tunnel driveway at 41 Cedar Street. What I see is a bad traffic situation if a new intersection, I mean that proposed driveway, is cut into the heart of Cedar Street. Like your own traffic consultant, Mazer, I too question the idea of allowing parking right up to that closed tunnel driveway. And like Mazer, I also wonder about slower traffic flow as a result of this clogged new intersection. I will briefly explain. There's a basic safety problem raised by Mazer many letters ago about blindly exiting that tunnel driveway. Allowing parking on both sides, says Mazer, quote, "should still be reviewed." Relative to what? Lack of sightlines exiting the driveway. And it isn't just two problem parking spaces. Think about distracted walkers. Or, Mazer goes on, "A large delivery vehicle parked in front of 41 Cedar could also block the driveway exit sightlines." Picture this: A car turning right from Main Street spots a large van, double parked at 41 Cedar. The driver sees an empty oncoming lane, so he skirts the van. Just then, a car turns left onto Cedar from the new driveway, which is hidden by the park man. They both made legal moves, and they are both in the wrong place at the wrong time. I want to point out that Mazer now thinks the on-street parking situation is so tricky that they suggest aerial photography to give the board a better understanding of how these sightlines will work or not. After all this back and forth reviewing since May of 2019, Mazer still does not give a final pass to the developer's contention that there's no need to eliminate any on-street parking. In fact, Mazer says, "You, the Board of Trustees, must take a closer look at this game-changing new intersection." Here's a larger point. If Cedar is burdened by new unsafe vans, more cars from the condo, and a tricky exit driveway, what does that do for the Broadway light queue? Well, here, Mazer is coy. They say it's up to you, board, to ask for a review of how pedestrian crossings and car turns out of existing driveways may become unsafe. Let's not forget that super-short Broadway light. More Cedar slowdowns mean more drivers will wait out two full lights, not another 10 seconds, in order to escape our downtown. Is that frustration what we aim for in sensible street design? Do we want walkability? Do we want clutter and driver insecurity? Where is the tipping point for walker and driver impatience? Mazer now suggests an actual observation study. That's never been done before.
Leslie, I'm sorry, that's three minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much to the board and to Liz Taylor.
And the last person we have is Niall. Niall, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I will be brief, I promise. You know, I'm struck by the observation, which I think is correct, that this building will appear much bigger than it appears in the renderings. And as you all know, that is a big concern for Zion Church. And I want to point out, Larry Taylor mentioned that you don't want to get Zion to talk to the developer. We have been doing that. We've had significant conversations with him. He has really... He does not want to plant any significant screening, you know, that he wants very low screening. And I understand, we understand that he wants the views of Zion and possibly the river from the top of the building. But again, I want to point out that in the village code, it states the screening and buffering may be required between uses. And the reason that's in the code is, this is the stereotypical project that is the reason for that wording in the code, screening. Screening is key. And, you know, it's fine to keep putting the onus on Zion to discuss with the developer to do the screening, but I really think the onus needs to be on the board to push for this, because it is an important part of the code, and again, it's there for the reason. You know, we had a project at 55 Livingston Historical Preservation Project, and I think we spent three sessions in front of the planning board with one neighbor who was concerned about one tree that was gonna be cut down, and we invited the neighbor to, we're gonna buy a tree. We invited him to place it for us, to make sure he was happy. We have trees that are being cut down here, and we need that same kind of sensitivity on the part of the boards to make sure that the screening, adequate screening is brought back. I haven't heard any discussion of significant screening among any board members, and I have to say, it's disturbing. You know, and as far as, you know, taking at face value that Scheme B cannot be done without the fourth floor is also a bit problematic, because I don't... You know, I work with the developers, of course you're gonna push. You want, you know, you want to make as much money as possible. I get it completely, and I'm sure you all understand that as well. But taking it face value immediately and saying, okay, we believe that that's the case, is another problem, because again, this is going to be bigger than it appears on the rendering. It's gonna be more impactful, I think that's certain. The other thing is Ed Manley's point, which was troubling me a little bit as well, that there's that extra room on the fifth floor. Yes, you have the right to have the fifth floor at 20%, but it is related to the discretion of the boards to allow the fourth floor. Just to say that that fifth floor is also at the discretion of the boards, fifth floor slash bulkhead. And like I said, yes, could be 20%, but in relation to the fourth floor, it has to be thought of as fourth and a partial fifth in your minds. And I think that is problematic, and I think you really need to...
Niall?
I might do three minutes?
Three minutes.
I'm off.
Okay, so I'd like to take, thank you. I'd like to take a motion to adjourn this public hearing to August 11th, 2020. Is there a motion? Trustee Casal, second trustee now, all in favor? Okay, so that passes. I think now the HRB has to take a motion to close their meeting. Yeah, air?
Yeah. Hello? Hello, yes, I make a motion to close our meeting. Do you have a second? Tell seconds, all in favor? Thank you.
Okay, Steve, playing good?
Yes, unmute.
No, there it is. I move that we close the public hearing. Second? Oh, David, hi.
Hi.
Excuse me, Steve. Mr. Hunter, actually, your motion has to be to close your public meeting, because this is really a hearing of the Board of Trustees. So if you could just... Yeah. A motion to close your public meeting.
Close the public meeting.
No, no, Nick. I want to thank everyone for taking the time out to do this. I do think Rob has a good point. We should make sure we do this in the future. Your input is valued. You're experts in fields, and your knowledge is, you know, very, very helpful and important to us. So I do want to thank everyone, even for those who didn't say anything. I appreciate you taking the time to be here, and we, you know, it's important that we get everybody's input, and it's very important, and it'll change the face of Dobbs Ferry, so you want to make sure we get it right. So thank you again. You know, we may call upon you later. And do I have a motion to close this meeting? Trustee Nell, second trustee DeRozzi, all in favor? That meeting is closed, anonymous, meeting is closed. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Everyone, stay healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.